Children.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
All right. It's nice to see so many new faces, young faces here. We have, first, we have to accept our agenda tonight. Just a matter of quick business. And we are going to eliminate one thing from our agenda. We are eliminating the refinance of the loans. That's 11.1 because we need to have a supermajority, which means four of us. And as you can tell, we only have three people here tonight. It's a little unusual. So we will postpone the refinance item until December 15th. So can I have a motion to accept our agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So over to Dr. Harrison.
Good evening, everyone, and I hope everyone had a restful Thanksgiving recess. And it's great to see so many people in the audience, but it's always exciting to see our students in the audience. So you're welcome to stay well beyond this recognition if you'd like. I know there'll be some exciting business, maybe a good civics lesson for you. But most importantly, we want to recognize your efforts as members of the French Club for a number of activities that you've facilitated within the middle school this year, but most significantly, the fact that you raised about $5,000 for Doctors Without Borders. So certainly an impressive and commendable effort. Truly a commendable effort and going to certainly a great cause. So I'd like to ask Mr. Sotile and Ms. Teszler to come forward to say a few words and then to introduce the members of the club that are present today. And when you're introduced, know that we have a certificate of recognition that you'll get afterwards. But when your name is announced, then come on forward and we'd like to shake your hand and congratulate you. So, Mr. Sotile, the floor is yours.
So I'm just going to say a very brief word about the French Club and about really many years of watching students of our French Club do just amazing things and show an enormous amount of enthusiasm for the language, but also for spreading the love of the culture throughout our building and beyond. Most especially, they have shown a commitment to service over the years. Dr. Harrison certainly mentioned the $5,000 for Doctors Without Borders, which is a longstanding cause that they have championed. But there are others, and I don't want to steal the spotlight because really, the person that I think should be speaking to the accomplishments of the group and to the commitment that's been shown, because she's shown an enormous amount of commitment of her own, is our own French teacher, world language chairperson, and advisor to our French Club, Madame Teszler.
So, yeah, this was our 12th year raising money for Doctors Without Borders. And we have done other causes. You know, if there was something in the world, in a French speaking, played part in the world that, you know, touched us and we wanted to help. But Doctors Without Borders has been our ongoing commitment. And I have to say, we got thrown a bunch of curveballs this year. Bunch of curveballs. It was the most challenging year we've ever had. And we talk a lot about 21st century skills. They demonstrated them like you cannot believe. We sat in our French club meetings and I said, "Okay, so here's the challenges here. We can't sell food." "We can't sell food. What are you talking about?" They actually wanted to send the shell bombs, some notes, but we were afraid from that. But they consistently and tenaciously came up with ways to solve the issue, the issues that we were presented with. And they were relentless in their desire to raise money for Doctors Without Borders and absolutely blew me out of the water with their ideas and their, just their willingness to stay with it until we figured it out. And we did figure it out. And we extended French Week into two weeks. We had a homeroom fundraiser competition to raise money for Doctors Without Borders. And I remember distinctly in French Club meeting saying, "No, I have a little bit of an issue with us having to offer chocolate croissant breakfast as an incentive for you guys to raise money. You should just do it because that's the right thing to do." And one of those students said, "Chocolate croissants really work." Thank you. You know what? That was the reality check I needed. And boy, did they raise money. They were amazing, truly, truly amazing. So it was a year of a lot of different things with French Week, and I just couldn't be more proud of these guys than those guys that couldn't come tonight. So I'll read their names, and you guys are going to come up this way and shake hands, okay? All right. So I'm just, I don't know why I circle them on here. I'll just do it in the board you guys again. Sidney Moston. Ariel. Simon. Timmy Moss. Paul Mercy. And Siya. Our honors. Nancy. And we have. Good luck. And we have. Congratulations. 2007. Karen. And Siya. David. Thank you. Congratulations.
I guess so.
So to Ms. Teszler and all the students, and certainly those that are not here tonight, congratulations on your great effort. And I think thank you for teaching us all some lessons about how members of our community can make a difference, not only locally to get folks thinking about things differently, but also to have some impact beyond our borders here. So congratulations on your great work. And I think you set some high standards for years to come. So, great job. Yes, and they have the certificates which you'll receive out in the library. So thank you all very, very much. Congratulations.
Sure. The floor is still yours.
Very good. So two other things to touch base on this evening. The first, I guess I'm looking to our audience where we have some other guests. The PTSA, as we know, always plays a great role and has a lot of impact on our schools, the community, and the education of our children. And of late, the PTSA has really begun to take an interest in advocacy, to think about how they can impact our schools from influences that may come beyond Irvington in Westchester. We see them oftentimes. We're looking out to Albany for these influences that are coming down the pike. In the PTSA's partnership with the New York Suburban Coalition, which is a local coalition of many school districts, they're preparing to launch an advocacy effort, in particular, a letter-writing campaign. And what I want to say, you know, the Coalition is a really wonderful group, a dynamic group that's loaded with a lot of enthusiastic school officials, but really, the core of the work is coming from the community members that are involved. And they've done some great things over the last two years. I'm proud to say that our Irvington contingent is really leading the charge right now and is motivating a lot of the work that's about to happen in the very near future. Their letter-writing campaign is going to tackle two issues, the first being GEA, which is the gap elimination adjustment, which was enacted back in 2009 in relation to the financial crisis, where the state going to cover its own struggles, reduced aid. And in Irvington, since that time, we've seen an impact of about $2.7 million in aid that had been reduced. This year alone, we're looking at approximately $334,000. So that's going to be one area that they're going to advocate for. And the other is to look at a recent initiative being led by SED, where they want to begin to mandate school participation in standalone field tests. So in looking at not only the fact that we have to consider that all of our state tests have questions embedded in the tests that are already field tests, field questions, but they want specific testing and want to be able to mandate that schools do that. We recognize that our kids already spend a lot of time in the classroom in taking state tests, and we don't think it should be mandated upon our schools, our teachers, and our kids to participate in this. So I would like to invite, you know, I know we're looking, you know, there's a few people here, and I don't know if there's a spokesperson, is it Michael, Mary Ann, Allison, Eric, whomever, to step to the mic to talk a little bit about the initiative that you're going to begin to launch in here in the near future.
Hi, I'm Michael Hannah. I'm on the PTSA communications. And, you know, as you know, I've kind of many meetings here and as have others. And we've learned so much from the presentations and on the PTSA. We get to learn a lot in being involved in, you know, budget campaigns, board elections. And, you know, we've had some big issues that you've had to tackle. So I wanted to say thank you for what you've been doing in terms of, you know, we've had the Common Core implementation and AEPR and, you know, the task cap. There's all these things. And what I've, by just being a part of this and what all of us being a part of this have come to realize is that it's not a game of, sometimes it can feel like whack-a-mole, but you have this issue and this issue and this issue. But what we are realizing is that if you connect the dots, it's really about what's happening at the state level, that there's a number of mandates being made that we have to implement here. You know, these are all things you know, but, you know, that as Dr. Harrison just said, there's a lot of state aid that went away with the recession. We had some stimulus money, but nothing has ever, you know, that aid has not come back fully yet. And you're going into, you know, budget planning, and you're going to be putting, you know, programs and things that you, like our district, will do against a number of things that you don't control because it's happening at the state level. So I think what's happening is that in our community and communities in our region, we're starting to say, you know, let's get organized. Let's not just have what's happening coming from the state down to our way, but make sure that we're reaching back up to the state to hear our concerns. And so along with the, you know, New York Suburban Consortium for Education, our PTSA, other representatives, we are getting organized, and we hope we can work with the board as well to build awareness, build consensus. We've now set up an online letter-writing campaign tool on our website. And so in the near future, we're going to be doing a letter that we're going to try and reach out to our community advocating for state aid to be restored to our district. And also, you know, parents are noticing, there's a lot of testing. And if we particularly have a test that we don't need to be doing, if Pearson is using our schools as research and development for developing tests, maybe we don't need that in our school district. Maybe they can find another way to do that. And the regions for our state are meeting next month to perhaps mandate that field testing. So that's our second letter is to urge that the regions vote no on that mandate. So thank you. We hope we can work with the school board on this.
Thank you very much.
Great. So thank you, Michael, everybody else on the PTSA for your work and advocacy on this front. To the board, I know through some of the conversation that we've had locally and we've extended to the broader consortium, we've, there's also some dialogue about looking to have boards consider some positions on these issues and possibly pass a resolution that then would memorialize the board's position on some of these issues that we could then send off to our legislators and folks at SED. So that conversation has started, and we're looking at possibly formulating some sample resolutions that would outline some of these concerns that we have in place. So we certainly thank you for your efforts and look forward to participating in the work that's hopefully going to bear some fruit for our school district.
Can you elaborate a little bit on what's happening between Irvington and the other districts? Is it just joint letter writing or is it something more formalized?
Yeah, so, well, there's a formal relationship and that, and certainly, Michael and Mary Ann were at the last meeting. There's, I'm trying to think, what's the total number of districts are we up to now?
There's 38 school districts, and it's representatives from each of those districts, and they vary from parent representatives to PTSA presidents to board presidents to superintendents, but all communicating about what's happening in their district and about what we can do collectively on these issues.
Does it actually have a formal name?
It's a name.
Yes. The New York Suburban Consortium for Education. They have a, actually, if anybody can go to Facebook, they have a Facebook page. I think I've shared that with you if you're able to look later. So it's, you know, it's-
Michael, one more time, sorry.
The New York Suburban Coalition.
The New York Suburban Consortium for Public Education.
Consortium.
Or consortium? Thank you.
So Irvington, through the PTSA, has representatives that sit in this group. And the group then has met twice this year and is planning and strategizing, looking for areas that they think we could have the greatest impact on schools. And right now, the two issues that have come to the forefront is GEA, looking at that restoration, and also looking at, there's an interesting dynamic when we're looking at the state having a surplus right now, and how could the state apply some of that money and reinvest it back in the schools? So there could be some play with GEA on that front. And obviously, the timeliness of trying to get that campaign underway as the state is headed into their budget process, just as we are in our local school districts. And then the other piece, it's just-
I just had a note to that. So with the GEA, I think I left that out, but it, right now, exactly is the time when the state is planning their upcoming budget. It's a projected $5 billion surplus, perhaps. But that gap elimination adjustment was taking state education money and using it to cover a shortfall in the state budget. Now that they have a surplus, a lot of people are looking to have that money, but it, you know, I think we could rightly feel it's appropriate to get that money back to education that was taken away.
And then the other that's timely, that SED has taken this move with respect to field testing and looking to, I think, really come down and clarify position. Last year, there were a handful of districts across the state that really kind of stood up to SED in shooting some holes in some of their language in and around the requirements for school districts to participate in field testing. And in response to that pushback, SED issued a, the leadership of SED presented a proposal to the regions recently that is suggesting that they recommend putting in place a requirement that school districts that are identified have to participate in this additional testing. So it opens a whole can of worms about the relationship between SED and the other state in educational leadership, whether it's Departments of Ed, the federal government, and the relationships that they have with the different publishers. And Pearson has absorbed so many other smaller companies and really, you know, state by state are developing tests and for individual states working on the national level with assessments. And, you know, if they're this massive organization, really the question is being, why don't they have, as in Michael's words, their own R&amp;D? Why aren't they field testing and developing their own questions? And if they want to work with public school systems to be able to do this, why aren't they taking ownership over this responsibility as a part of their contracts? And maybe award districts that want to participate or come up with a different model where they could develop additional testing tools.
Just a quick comment on that, too. So one person that we heard from was the Brewster Board of Education President, who was also an educator. And that, his point was pretty much what Dr. Harrison was saying, that, you know, why do we have to have field testing in every single New York school district? It can happen on a smaller level. They can have a relationship with the school districts that want to do it. A number of school districts last year chose not to do it, and that's why they're considering mandating it now.
How does, I know, Mary Ann, you and Tony used to be part of that other organization that was also a letter writing?
Same organization. People who were working on the question. Just the same name and stuff.
Same thing. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So a couple of the things that I'd like to touch base on, and one as a follow-up to the last board meeting when Dr. Core provided an overview of the tri-state consortium on world language report. Just to refresh memory, the objective of the report was to provide some insight into areas of strength and identify areas of growth within our program. While it's not a definitive report of what we'll do, but we need to say that it certainly will serve as a foundation for the work will be done. As you know, in the report, there were many findings that resulted in the identification of commendations, but of course, recommendations as well. As Dr. Core stated two weeks ago, she's working closely with the school principals in the world language department to identify those appropriate next steps. During the course of her presentation, she also identified a number of areas that are going to be focused on within the department. The work is progressing, and with that in mind, come end of January, beginning of February, we'll report to the board on the specific steps that we're going to take in response to those recommendations. We're certainly all committed to making sure that our program continues to grow, to provide the best experience for our kids, and we look forward to the improvements that are going to come from this process. Looking, another kind of hot button item that's been in the news, and you may have read some news articles about this. Recently, the state education department released a report that was entitled, "Where Are They Now?" And essentially, what they were doing was looking at graduation data by cohort. So we're looking at, and the examples that they've used was the graduating class of 2018, 2008 cohort, class of 2012, and looking at where kids are real time. And trying to compare data from, that was reported by schools, with students intent of where they're going to college, what their journey was going to be. And then utilizing college clearinghouse data to try to track where these kids went and how many of them went to school, continued on the journey that they identified, how many maybe dropped out along their college journey, how many took longer than five years. And in some cases, possibly kids that originally said that they weren't going to head to college that then did end up in school. This information, when it came out, was really alarming to a lot of folks in the school communities in that the numbers that SED was reporting were significantly lower than any of us would have anticipated. So for example, Irvington, we're looking at an adjusted rate of like an 80% completion rate of kids that started off in college and headed all the way through. So we have concern that that figure isn't right. We've seen some of our neighbor districts that are in the process of trying to validate this, either validate or poke holes in the state's data. One school that was cited in the newspaper, I think, indicated that the state reported they had like a 66 or 67% completion rate, and their own data represented an actual figure of 89%. So what we've actually done, there, last Monday, we had, the RIC facilitated a webinar for CIOs and shared some different strategies of how they could pull this data. So we had staff member participate in that, and then collaborating with districts kind of came up, we took the information they had and looking for the most appropriate approach for us in pulling that data. In doing so, we identified a pool of approximately 25 students that seemed to be missing from the state's data set. So we're actually kind of going back the old-fashioned way and reaching out to those individual families. And in doing so, we're going to be able to come up with a real number to see what our students' completion rate was in school. And we're optimistic that the number's going to be greater than 80%, but if not, that gives us some reason to step back and reflect on what those clauses may be. But so we're in that process. We're hopeful that we'll be able to connect with those 25 families. Calls started yesterday, and we're trying to track folks down in whether it's phone or email, and to see where these 25 students have ended up. Admittedly, the state pointed to some flaws in some of the data, acknowledging that not all schools report. So they're saying that there's, you know, a plus or minus 3% error, but we still believe that we have more than 80% of our students that have headed through, that completed the college process.
Just out of curiosity, who's during the call? Is it the high school?
Yes, we're from clerical staff in the high school, and the guidance department is reaching out and making the phone calls. So we will report back, and hopefully, we'll have some positive news. Then when we look at the different collective efforts that exist around the community, we have the example, certainly, the advocacy, but also on the superintendent's front, we're going to collect all this data from different schools and collaborate on some releases that will, if we're able to prove SED wrong, to communicate the errors that are there based upon our own real-time data and communication from our students and their parents. Finally, I want to-
Wait, before you, where did this information come out? I just missed it.
It came out about a week and a half ago.
Can you send around links or information?
Absolutely.
I have this document.
Yep. Not a problem. I wanted to touch base that, going back to Thursday, the 20th, we had our Fall Book Club, which was, we focused on the reading of The Gatekeepers, which was great because it built upon the visit of Jacques Steinberg, the author who came to Irvington. The book club was a great experience. We certainly had some super dialogue with many parents that were in attendance. But I certainly want to thank the PTSA for helping organize it, and of course, Meg Russen for not only her effort in organizing it, but for opening her beautiful home to us for the evening. And I want to thank Dave Cohen, Deb Marinello, and Emily Coleman for not only being there and participating, but for enriching the discussion for all of us. So we look forward to another book club in the spring. We're kind of contemplating a few different titles right now and hope that we'll continue to invite some great dialogue around some important education topics. What was great from the second time that I've done it, that there was a bit of a different audience there. So we drew upon different segments of our parent community, which was rewarding, and a couple new faces, too. So there's some great events coming up in the school district over the next week and a half. Tomorrow night is the middle school, high school band concert at 7:30 in the theater. It's a sports-filled weekend where we kick off basketball with the girls' Warnock Tournament on Thursday, the TUI Tournament for boys' basketball on Friday, and then both events run through the weekend with the championship rounds. At the high school, Monday is Junior Parent Night at 7:00 p.m. And then we have on December 11th, the middle school, high school, winter chorus, and orchestra concert also in the theater. I want to note that on next Friday, the 12th, the high school wind ensemble and the choral will perform at the MetLife Building at noon. And then we have a wrestling tournament hosted here on the campus that will be all day on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, on to our next agenda item. We have our-
Sorry, wait. Which day is the MetLife performance? Is what day?
Friday, the 12th at noon.
Interesting, because I had a communication that said it was the Tuesday, the 9th, but I couldn't-
I will clarify. I have it on my calendar for that date.
Yeah.
But, you know-
I just had an exchange with, with Gillespie on that, but I, she could be wrong.
You know what? I will clarify that because it appears on my calendar for the 12th. Let me see.
Just want to make sure the right people go the right places.
You know what? I have it on my calendar in two places.
Ah.
So why don't we allow me to retract that? And I'm glad that you are dialed into that, Mr. Montgomery. So if I can retract that and clarify that the wind ensemble is Tuesday, the 9th at noon at MetLife.
Let's just find out where.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, on to our next agenda item. We have our-
Sorry, wait. Which day is the MetLife performance? Is what day?
Friday, the 12th at noon.
Interesting, because I had a communication that said it was the Tuesday, the 9th, but I couldn't-
I will clarify. I have it on my calendar for that date.
Yeah.
But, you know-
I just had an exchange with Gillespie on that, but I, she could be wrong.
You know what? I will clarify that because it appears on my calendar for the 12th. Let me see.
Just want to make sure the right people go the right places.
You know what? I have it on my calendar in two places.
Ah.
So why don't we allow me to retract that? And I'm glad that you are dialed into that, Mr. Montgomery. So if I can retract that and clarify that the wind ensemble is Tuesday, the 9th at noon at MetLife.
Let's just find out where.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, on to our next agenda item. We have our curriculum committee report from our curriculum committee, which is just Robyn Kerner tonight. Maria is also on the curriculum committee. So I will turn it over to Ms. Kerner.
Okay. It was Reina, Chris, Maria, myself. And I'm primarily focused on two areas of discussion. Initially, we talked a little bit about professional development and the calendar in terms of the number of days that we have devoted to it. And I guess currently, we have five days professional development, two before school, two during the year, and the last day of school. And Reina and Chris were kind of outlining all of the work that, you know, curriculum work, there's mapping revisions, there's state requirements, there's time for the teachers to meet themselves. And we kind of went through school by school and talked about common planning time, which is very small for some of the schools. And there's also a lot of demands. For example, in the high school, I guess it's 2:30 to 3:05, but that also includes a faculty meeting once a month and department meetings, as Reina pointed out. We also talked about, Reina was, you know, going about explaining to us how there's building work, there's vertical work that needs to be done between grades, there's across the grade, technology work, there's also ESL, English as a Second Language Report. So I guess Reina and Chris, to that end, are working on trying to come up with some options in the calendar to identify ways to increase the amount of time that teachers would have for professional development. As an example, I guess, we talked about Ardsley has an hour early every Wednesday the students get out, as well as, I guess, in the high school, there's one late Friday. In Dobbs, there's early dismissal every Wednesday, and in Hastings, one Friday a month, there's a delayed start, and there's three early release days. So there's, just as an overview, they provided us information. So I guess next up is, I don't know if you guys want to add anything, but I think we
Yeah, I think you summarized it very well. In recognizing the challenges that we have and trying to maximize opportunities to work with our teachers to perform the work necessary. So certainly, I'm not going to propose anything that would be as deep as, say, Ardsley looking at something once a week or Dobbs Ferry, but looking at some opportunities in our schedule where we could identify maybe a little bit more time for professional development through some delayed openings or early release time that we could stagger throughout the school year. Next year's calendar is going to be complex and we may have some difficult decisions to make on top of looking at these opportunities that Mrs. Kerner just discussed and looking at the fact that we have a late Labor Day complicates things quite a bit. So the end of year is determined by SED, who establishes Rating Day, which is the last day of the school calendar. So when we look at where those dates fall, the challenge that I initially see, and something that we're working on right now, and of course we try to align our efforts with our area school districts. But two scenarios seem to be playing out. One, that we bring teachers in for a couple days before kids, as we always do, but before Labor Day and have children start on the Tuesday, which I think is September 8th. The challenge there is trying to preserve that week in February and include the required number of school days. And then the other scenario for consideration is bringing children in possibly before Labor Day and seeing if we can preserve the February recess. Each of those scenarios are problematic for some folks in our community. A challenge in getting some folks back that may have other plans during the summer that don't return before Labor Day. And then the other end, looking at folks that really value that break in February. So we're going to develop a couple different scenarios to address those needs generally. But in doing so, we'll also look to integrate some options for increased PD time.
Great. Anything else?
Yeah, I mean, the second thing, I'm not really going to go into much detail on this because I think Reina covered it a little bit and then she held a seminar for people. We talked a lot about the report cards and kind of the thinking behind it, as we've talked about in the board before. Reina had spearheaded redesigning the report card so that specifically in ELA and math, the language dovetailed with the Common Core language. So there, those two areas were, mainly ELA, I think, had more changes than math, but those two areas were changed. Science and social studies remained virtually the same, a couple minor tweaks. And I think that the biggest thing of note, at least to me, when we were going through it, is that kind of looking at the report card as a standalone might be very difficult for some parents, but there is a very detailed guide that Reina has also put together, and I think it's just important to get the word out that if you read them together, you'll be much more enlightened as to what that language is. And I guess it's a language that the kids speak in the class versus if you just read the report card, it might sound foreign to a lot of us and be confusing. So, you know, we talked a little bit about, we went back and forth in curriculum about, you know, why could we do this and what about this? But for the most part, that was really what we spent our time.
Great.
A very thorough job on that guide that accompanied the report card. It's impressive. All right. May I just, well, just one thing. It sounds like we'll have some, we'll have to have some discussions about, you know, where the extra time for professional development will come from and what we're giving, what we or the community or parents have to give up in our, so it'll be helpful, I think, as we go through that process to have some understanding of what the different professional development programs are, where we're, you know, what this additional time will allow you to do that we are not doing now and what else we're doing and is it possible to do more with the allotted time and those sorts of things. I think it's, I think it's important, I feel it's important to get comfortable with the need for so much professional development and the fact that the time's being well-spaced.
No, no, of course, John, and that's appreciated. And in my mind, when I think about that first discussion that we have around calendar, I saw outlining pretty much what Mrs. Kerner presented and what, a lot of times that we have, what the needs are and how that time can be utilized, so certainly.
I think we also, in curriculum meeting, we also did talk a little bit about, you know, how can we find out currently how much teachers are pulled from instructional time?
Uh huh.
And I think, you know, I know there's a challenge to doing that, but I know we talked about it would be helpful information because then, as we're looking at figuring out where we're going to take time from, maybe we could use that more, maybe we could use the time more efficiently if we know where they're being pulled because there's always that concern that-
Yeah.
-the teachers aren't in the classroom all the time and any time that there's a loss of instructional time is probably not our ideal situation.
Yeah.
So, I agree.
Right. And do we ever envision the PD sort of going back down to where it was in the past?
Maybe I could just clarify because I think that sometimes it gets put under this umbrella of PD and it's really not PD. It's not all professional learning. So when you look at Dobbs or Hastings or Ardsley, some of what they're really doing, it's articulation. It's the chance where teachers are working together. So I think we'd all call that professional learning because there's nothing more valuable than sitting with your colleagues and talking about practice and talking about what's going on in your classroom or, or looking and planning for an assessment. So it's not PD in the sense that we're delivering some sort of new learning. I would hope that, yes, that would ebb and flow as we do different programs, initiate new, you know, new programs such as like foundations. In a year of foundations, you need to have a lot of more direct instruction, professional learning. But what those other districts use it for is articulate, a lot of articulation and the across grade level work. It's also where they know that they have the allowed time so that maybe third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers are working vertically. So that vertical and that horizontal articulation, that's really the power of the, because you really only get an hour or two. It's not like a whole day of professional learning. So I think, you know, to John's point, as we can share some of this and really paint the picture of what it is we're talking about and what the benefits are, or where else it can happen if it's not there, I think it would give a better, a broader picture, more clarity.
More questions about that? All right, so we move from our committee report to comments from the community on items that appear on the agenda tonight. Three community members, one of whom has already spoken, no other comments, all right? So then we roll quickly to our consent agenda, which consists of a lot of things tonight. So can I have a motion to accept our consent agenda? Again, we won't vote on the entire thing until we've discussed it. And this would include items 8.1, 8.2, 9.1, 10.1 through 10.9. We skip over the refi and we have items 11.2 and 11, through 11.10. I have a motion to accept all of that.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so now we may discuss whatever we would like to discuss. I guess while you're thinking, I'll just thank the PTSA that has now left for payment for the, here we are, to- for payment, or are they, uh, here we are, to, um,